This is the January tenth, 2024 meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the secretary's report of December thirteenth. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? No? If not?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you. And moving on to the budgets.
So we are now in 2024. I still am waiting on a couple things from last year. So for our energy bill, I wait on December's. I was told that February, January, February, March are the highest months of usage. So that means our bills would be quite high. And then for the telephone, I am also waiting for December's bill. Other than that, everything that is invoiced is currently being paid. So we are standing right now at forty-four percent. I just want to make a note that regarding salaries, we do have a couple of work anniversaries coming up for the library technicians. So some of their paychecks will be slightly higher in the coming months. Other than that, does anyone have any questions regarding the current budget?
Looks like it's right on track for halfway through.
I know. Flying by.
Anybody else have any questions or anything on the budget? All right.
I have a motion to accept the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Old business. We have an update regarding the town's snow removal plan.
Last Wednesday, so January third, I met with the town administrator to discuss our snow removal plan. Jen has been doing a wonderful job keeping it on the agenda for the selectmen and also emailing. And last Wednesday, I was brought in to discuss our hours and what the town could offer. I was told that there was no way that the library could be plowed before seven AM, which is Rick's arrival time. So I asked if that, what time could the library be plowed? What time could you guarantee me that the library parking lot will be plowed? So that way you don't have to worry about, is it plowed or is it not plowed? I was told that we could have the library plowed before eight-thirty. So I mentioned that, okay, well, that means Rick will start at eight-thirty. Because we know for sure that in the event there's a snowstorm that doesn't warrant a closure of town buildings, that our parking lot will be plowed at eight-thirty, before eight-thirty, and that Rick will come in and have a spot to park at and work on, you know, shoveling the stairways and the walkway. But that is just from Monday through Friday. Saturday is a whole other ballgame because we are one of the few buildings open during the weekend, so that plan is not really solid. There was some confusion on who to call that day for snow removal. But with that being said, this Sunday, we kind of had a little snowstorm and the parking lot was plowed that evening. So there's progress, there is awareness of the library's parking lot. I could see on the monitors that it was plowed, so I was really thrilled about that. And that was on Sunday, so we weren't even open. So but it was good that they were on top of it. And it was Dave who did it, so congrats to Dave for his first snow plowing job. So he was actually here this morning, and we have another issue going on with the library. And I thank him for coming in and for keeping us, keeping myself not worried about, is it gonna be open on Monday morning, you know? So we have a plan in place with just some minor little issues surrounding Saturday. So that's the update regarding that. Any questions about snow removal?
Just that they did a great job. They did. We came through Monday morning. And they were done extremely well. All the spaces, everything.
The fact that you're one of the few buildings open on Saturday is probably a good thing. Because if they're gonna come, if they can't shrink it, right? You know, right?
Yeah, they listen.
It's a contract they're not gonna break.
Yeah, yeah. So they, I think it was around eight o'clock that they were plowing, you know? And the storm, it was weird. It was a weird timeline because it was snow, it was rain. And then up here was more snow than where I live. It's, everything's just slush, so I'm like, oh, no. It's different. But yes, but it's on the radar, so I don't see why a Sunday or Saturday would be any different. But it's there, and they're aware that it needs to be done.
Okay, anybody has anything with that? And we're gonna move on to new business, the revised study room policy.
So here we have the new study room policy and the previous study room policy. There were just some minor adjustments to the wording and to the layout of the study room form. The biggest takeaway from this would be the first item on the policy. Instead of having, you're required to have an Acushnet library card, we changed it to have a library card registered in the sales network. And we also added a photo ID. Because the study room usage is extremely high, you know, we get people who are not, you know, from Acushnet, they're from outside or in the network but elsewhere that want to use a study room. So I changed, we changed the wording to it. That way we can just have anyone with a sales library card or a photo ID because there are people who are visiting and they need a quiet place to do a Zoom interview or you name it. And I wanted to include everyone instead of being just a cushion of public library cards because it's not really how we operate here. We don't deny anyone access to the study room if they don't have an Acushnet card. And then, so on the previous policy lines, five, six, and seven are now combined into the second line. So to summarize, study rooms may be used, study rooms are used for two hours. Sometimes we have an incident where there are someone, there's a group waiting to use it. Unfortunately, after someone's two hours are up, you know, they have to forfeit the room, and then the next group can go in. We changed the wording that users may extend their study room time to up to one hour if no one is waiting for the room. If no one is waiting for the room, technically, they could stay there all day for all I care. You know, as long as the patron is aware that, you know, they exceeded their limit. But if nobody's waiting for it, you can stay and please use the room. So that's what happened to number two. And then everything else, so three, four, five, and six just shifted down. That was that. So none of the wording has changed there. That remains from the previous study room policy. Any questions on the study room? And the other thing is, so regarding the policy, the other thing is, we really wanted to enforce that having a library card or ID in order to take the key from us to use the study room. So starting on February first, we would like to just put a warning up there saying if you want a study room, you need your photo, your ID or your library card. And that's the only thing. Because we hold so many different items of collateral, and it's kind of weird. BJ's cards, you name it.
Oh, boy.
So just to have a little bit more consistency. So what we do, we put a sign in the study rooms saying, start on February first, make sure you have your library card or your photo ID in order to borrow a study room key. Okay? And that's basically it for that.
Can you guys all be careful with them?
They could have worked behind the counter that can reach.
All right, does anyone have any questions or comments on the new study policy? Study room policy. All right, then.
I'll make a motion for the new study room policy be accepted.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along to the FY twenty-five budget.
All right. We met, so Nancy didn't see them met last, oh, Monday from this week, to discuss the FY twenty-five budget. I'm just gonna go quickly through the lines and just explain why we arrived at, why we arrived at these numbers. So for the director and patient services supervisor, the salaries are meaning the same. The actual seventy-five that you see for 2024 is not letting. So ours, my salary and Sandra's salary will mean the same as of right now. The three thousand that was from the seventy-five went down to tech services, and that is money needed for COLA and work anniversaries coming up in FY twenty-five. The children's room assistant is a new line for us this year, and that went up two point four eight percent to include COLA and work anniversary for the new position, which would be a year coming FY twenty-five. Longevity went down because the previous director had a lot more time than myself, so I'm not getting any longevity. We did, we will be having another staff member receiving longevity, but it's very minimal compared to what was done last year. So that also went down. The big thing about, the big question mark about FY twenty-five is the increase in energy. I am aware, the last finance committee meeting and yesterday's selectman meeting, it was also mentioned again that the increase of kilowatts per hour is going from nine cents to seventeen cents. So we're looking at double energy in the coming fiscal year. I'm still unsure if that is starting this January. I haven't gotten any clarification on it, but it was only mentioned in those two meetings. So we increased our energy line by seven thousand dollars to give us a double of what we're expecting, this increase from Eversource. The building grounds is going, we would like to have it to go up by five hundred dollars, and that five hundred dollars has been taken from travel. I don't see us traveling to conferences or to sales meetings because everything is done on Zoom, so there won't be any long distance travel. If it was a travel, it would be like to Lake Mill. So I'd rather that money go to the building and grounds line because the building is showing its age. This morning, yesterday, we had a clogged toilet issue again. This morning, I've already reached out to Dave Maintenance and couldn't do it. So I have that ready on call. They're coming in any minute to look at it. So as you know, I've been here six months, and I've called the plumber about five times. So, and it's just not plumbing that's the issue, but you know, the building is showing its age. And I'd rather see that money go towards something that it will get used than just sit there. So the other two items, everything else remains the same, and the other two items are from sales. So these are sales estimates from the network. So tech support went down slightly, and our fee for being in the network and everything else that sales provided provides is also, it went up almost two percent. In total, this proposed budget would be about two point one percent increase from last year's. Any questions on the budget?
So it seems to me the only bump up is the energy cost. Otherwise, twenty-four to twenty-five would pretty much be flat.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's, the difference is about seven thousand dollars, and that's what we bumped. The rest of it was just moving figures around. So I think we're in good shape with this budget.
It looks good. It definitely looks good. The MAR.
Yes.
Because that was probably the next thing that you were gonna talk about, so.
But I do have the figure from our.
Okay, I have it.
We do, okay. So we are well, with this proposed budget, we're well there.
Okay.
That's.
Yes, right, yeah.
Two ninety-seven.
Two hundred ninety-seven and one hundred and forty-one dollars for FY twenty-five.
Yeah, well, let's, no, I'm sorry. This one. Is this the number one?
No, it would be this one.
Oh.
Because you have to times it times one.
It's gotta be twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, right?
Yes, I should have.
Divided by three.
Divided by three times of one point five, zero two five. So it would be two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars that we have to. And if we don't, we would be in danger of losing state aid, losing your credibility, and it would be very critical if that were the case.
Two ninety-seven, one forty-one?
Yep. Yes. Okay.
And again, even if we, even if we didn't increase the energy, we would still, we would still be okay. You know, depending on, I mean, I don't know what the town's gonna wanna do for that. So, but I mean, I think we should put forth a budget with, with the increase and then let them.
Yep.
Just, just wanna add.
Yes.
We have to do the increase because if we were to step, it would be two ninety-nine figure from last year. That's cutting our figure way too close.
Okay.
All we need is something to go wrong somewhere. And we need more than that's.
Okay, right.
Not even quite two thousand. All it is quite two thousand. But we need a little more buffer than that. So we definitely, we know the increase is going to be there. It may not be seven thousand, but it's gonna be something.
Right.
We do have to be careful with that.
Okay.
That sounds good. Great job. Anybody have any questions on that?
Can you explain to me, like, the state requires you to spend a minimum amount? And if you don't, then they take away?
So we have to spend a minimum of sixteen percent on materials.
Okay.
I don't have the figure right for, right now for this fiscal year. But fifteen, sixteen percent has to be used on materials. And materials include programming and physical materials. Anything that is strictly for Acushnet patrons. So for example, Hoopla, oh, or for anyone. So Hoopla is strictly for Acushnet patrons, so we can't count the Hoopla funding for it. Because we, we, every quarterly, we put two thousand dollars in there so people can borrow ebooks, audio books, and so forth. But that's just for Acushnet patrons, so we can't use that. But materials and, there's a lot of things there. That is included in the sixteen percent that we have to use. I can get that figure for you, I just don't have it.
I'm just trying to understand the bigger picture.
Yeah, talking the mar.
If you don't spend a certain amount, then the state will withhold? Or you won't be eligible for a certain amount?
The, if you don't spend the, I don't, it's not as drastic as not getting the MAR. The MAR is what you need to get by from the town.
Okay.
Because if you don't, they will cut or eliminate stating from you. They could decertify the library, which is not a great thing at all. They're, they're looking for the towns and the cities to at least, yes, at least put two point five percent every year.
Okay.
And so how you calculate that is you take what was, what was actually appropriated to the library for the last three years, so it'd be twenty-two, FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Add those together, divide by three, and then multiply by one point zero two five.
Okay.
And then you get that figure. So we can't be underfunded by that figure if we wanna stay accredited.
So if you cut your budget too much, you really are petty, wise, and palm foolish.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Right, which is why Nancy was saying, you know, if we, if we don't increase the energy, that we're just gonna have to increase and put money somewhere anyway. We'd rather put it to the energy because that's what we think that we need it at this point. So we don't have to try to figure it out later, especially if what they say is true, that it's gonna go up. I mean, double.
I mean, it was mentioned again, I watched this, I watched it live. I watched the selectmen's meeting because, you know, the FY twenty-five budget was there, and I, you know, wouldn't wanna be in the know. And they mentioned the increase, and I'm like, okay, I know for sure, you know, that it's happening. I just don't know if it's happening this month.
Right.
But I do know it will affect FY twenty-five.
Right, exactly.
So.
And this is coming from Eversource?
Yeah, so they, they had like a constellation grouping. I'm not sure, but this is just for town buildings. It's not for residential, residential homes. That the, this funded, this thing, I think, lasted, what was told in the meeting was for four years, I believe. It ended, and now it's going up to seventeen cents as opposed to nine.
So it's what you said, the contract.
The contract, yeah.
Yeah. So we will feel it, you know? And if it starts this month, historically, January, February, March are our biggest energy spending months. We will, in our current budget, we will feel that in our, our, our energy line.
So is mostly the energy cost for the library, electricity, or is it?
It's electricity, yes. So the heating, the heated walkways that gets used, but it's mostly the heat, you know?
Yeah, it's still young in the summer.
Yes, but I guess it's cheaper than the heat. I don't know how that works. But, you know, our lights are on timers. So it's not like the lights are on in the building, they're on timers, they shut off automatically. It's, you know, it's. We'll see.
Excellent. Does anyone have any other questions, comments, concerns? And we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the FY twenty-five budget of three hundred and six, that will send fifty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. Three zero six zero five two point four eight, which is a two point one percent increase.
Fantastic.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you too.
Rolling right into the FY twenty-three annual report. That's all right.
All right. So the annual report might look familiar to those who have been on the, as, who have been a trustee for a while. So what I updated and added in, so the first paragraph we have here is a short summary of mostly, this, last year was a year of arrivals and departures. There were.
So.
I know. My thing. So I mentioned Gina's work and impact in the community, and the children's room assistant's position finally getting filled as a full-time position. And I have some highlights that happened. So I came in halfway in the year, so I had to look back to see what happened from January to May. So I highlighted, which I thought was one of the greatest news that the library saw last year, is that we had a highest-attended concert with two hundred and seventy-five participants during the summer concert series. In April, the library participated in the Sales Ultimate Road Trip. I heard stories of people, you know, the people coming here, getting their apple stamped on their map. And, and it wasn't just sales patrons, it was people from all over the state. And we had two events that week. We had Toe Jam Band, which is, you know, so popular, and we also had a concert that was outside. We finally, we received new computers. Our staff computers were old, so those are, you know, I'm far be grateful for that. And then we had some authors, and we had a ton of art workshops. That I didn't miss everything because I needed another sheet, and I didn't want to do that. Under library missions and, mission and offerings, this is just a summary of what the library does. And I mentioned, towards the bottom, are the Dungeons and Dragons group that is new for last year, the drop-in crafts that were done by Sandra, myself, and then Ren when we were in transition between children's room assistants. And then our museum passes, just general information about the library under library hours of operation and staff and board. And then towards the back talks about state certification and interlibrary loan processes for, processes for library patrons. Any questions about the, those annual reports? Did I miss something?
I do believe they changed it because they didn't do the brackets.
Yeah, I, I was like, I thought it was the Toe Jam Band. I was like, I think it is puppet.
No, and you read it off in.
I was, it was a flyer, it was a foot with a set toe jam.
No, that's great. And then that.
I mean, maybe it was in the toe or something.
Yeah. Is this, is that.
I was sure.
A puppet?
Yeah. Now it's, now they're.
I understand. They did quite a few different things and didn't have any puppets in it when I saw.
And then I have in the, next to the last paragraph is a space.
Yes.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah.
Sorry, you put up.
I did.
Perfect.
I, she saw her. This is, it's split into one page, so I just cut it.
Nope, nope, that's fine. No, those are the only couple things that I saw. Everything else looked good. I thought the, I thought it was very well written. I thought the highlights were great.
I just dropped those.
Yeah, that's a great job.
I just did a lot this week.
I have to look.
Oh, yeah, it's always to try to figure out what you're gonna do and then what, you know? And now, now that you're doing it, you can almost jot things, like now that you're in January, you can jot things down, and as you get to the, you'll be like, oh, you won't have to try to remember.
Yep, and especially the statistics, because I gotta break it now from half of FY twenty-three, half of FY twenty-four, and just, you know, just do twenty-three.
Right, 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 right.
But yes.
Does anyone have anything else that they saw? And do you wanna change, add, subtract, question? Does anyone have anything else that they saw, and you wanna change, add, subtract, question? No? All right, then. So with those, we just need a motion with with those.
I need a motion to accept the annual report with the changes noted, sorry.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye, thank you. Okay. And the director's report.
All right, so December and the week, first week of January, we're action packed here. Just some highlights, last Friday, January fifth, I held our first staff meeting. And it went. It was desperately needed, and it was great to just have everyone in the same room, and that way we can just communicate, and, you know. I had a ton of ideas, they had a ton of ideas, and it was fantastic. So I I hope to do one, another one come before summer reading, so maybe in June or May, we'll see what the schedule looks like. But I would like to do it twice a year. Some fun highlights, so we are getting a new museum pass, thanks to the friends. Application was sent out, so we will soon have a museum pass to the following children's museum. And I look forward to putting that out there. We've seen you get some calls asking for it, and there's not many libraries locally that have it. And it's not too far, it's not like going to Boston, and it looks like a fantastic place to hang out. Um, so you have, excellent, excellent.
I don't, yeah. Outstanding.
So I I'm excited to 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 have that here, so should be anything else. The other thing that I am really happy about, when I applied for local cultural grants, I've received two so far, I received one from Rochester. And the other one from the Acushnet Cultural Council, and I thank them both, we were denied one from New Bedford. But I'm in the process of submitting, I already submitted the application for Rochester, and Acushnet, I'm just waiting back on receiving the correct application. And then we also got our first state aid grant of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy three dollars. So that means I did state aid correctly, and that we were awarded in the second round, so I am thrilled that that happened. The other things that are building related that should be mentioned, so there's quite a few things that happened in the past month. One, I forgot which rainstorm it was, water was coming in on the on the side hallway here, so the threshold underneath the door was rotted, and it was removed, so rain was coming in. And the following day, Dave came in, looked at it, we figured out we needed to buy like a, I don't remember the correct term, but it has a track in the middle, and then underneath, you slide it through the door. So Dave found that, purchased it, installed it, and now we have a brand-new one on that door, that's why the door is a little tough to open, because it's new and it hasn't flattened down, but we know it's sealed. So nothing's coming in there.
Right.
The other things that were done, we finally, we have door stoppers in the study rooms, so when people would open the door, it would just hit the door, the wall. Now we have some door stoppers that Dave installed, and we have one in this, in the circulation desk area. The swinging gate that we use constantly moves throughout the day, that was getting loose, and Dave tightened it and put some wood behind it, so that way, cuz the wood is a little flexible. And then the other thing that we are having. There's some issues with our deck. So the first thing is the stairs. One of the stairs, the the plank on top was up, so they're coming up. It was found that the wood on the stairs, I believe, is not pressure treated, so the wood is soft, so Dave's like, okay, stick a screw in there. Didn't, they had to get the big, big one to go through. So they might need to be, the plan is to have them screwed again, that way they're secure, we don't want planks hitting people in the face. But the wood situation. I don't know why that would be different than the walkway here, or the wood underneath the the actual deck. But the problem, the the prob- the all the stairs are fine right now, but come the warmer weather, we'll probably have to revisit the steps. And then the other thing is, right along the walkway here, there is a plank that rests up on the brick of the building, so it's a trip house. It looks like, what I was told, that it was cut, it wasn't, it should have been cut shorter so that it rests flush with the building, but it's kinda up like this. I don't know if over time the tracks kind of swells, I I don't. But it is Dave's, uh, Dave's agenda, he plans on removing it, cutting it, and put it back. When the weather is, right, you know. Better. So Dave was very busy, and then the other thing is, and I also, when I also met with the town administrator to go with snow removal, he also mentioned projects for Dave. So just a few items, and it's mostly painting, so this hallway here has some splotches that could be detached, so that could be painted. There are some. Where there's white paint on the wood, the the wood is bleeding through, so that could be detached, and there are different locations in the library. And then the other thing is the handrail on the deck, there's rust spots, so they just need a a coat of paint. So those are just projects that come the summer, and he also has students to help from Old Colony. But that being said, I I have been looking at other projects, you know, that is different. So it's just minor things I need to do, and the thing is is pretty pretty straightforward. And then. So Monday, we had the PTO meeting, and I brought up our brand-new winter reading program called Babapali. Where you read around a monopoly board, so each place you land has a different theme. This is all Ren, this is her little baby here, and it's genius, and it's been very popular. I thought, because it was winter, things would be a little cool, no, no, so we've only had it now for two days, and we've had about twenty-two people sign up. And it's from ages five to adults.
So it's just an Acushnet thing, it's not something you bought?
No, this is just, it's a.
Okay. It did look cool, I didn't know where she.
Yeah, no, it was created by, so it's a monopoly board, and in each place has like a word, or like a theme, and then you read the back of the instructions, and it tells you to read a book with a. A moon on the cover, you know, it's really clever.
So cool.
And it's fun, so when you sign up, you receive a dice, a brag tag, the sheet, and the board. And the board is, it's just a card stock, it's not like.
But you get the dice and.
Yes, yes.
I have to say, I was at the PTO meeting, and I was one of those people that had to leave the PTO meeting, and whatever the drive is, drive to the library, we need to get on board, and then and then we went home. So I was.
I'm glad, I'm glad.
Absolutely.
I I figured for this, it's been a hit, and it's only been a day and a half, two days now, and and it runs through, eighth through the March twenty ninth, so we have a good chunk of time. It's for M and H, and if you wanna take a look at the board, you know, when you leave, go right ahead. I just wanna also mention aside from Babapali, this month, we have resumed our storytimes, so our storytimes are Wednesdays at ten thirty. This weekend, on Saturday the thirteenth. It's a long weekend, we do have Lego Club at eleven, and then this Tuesday, we have something brand-new, which is cookies with a recent college grad. Ren, our children's room assistant, is a recent college grad, and she would like to just offer very informal advice on like, how do you make friends in college? How is college, how is college, you know, and sometimes, being a younger age, you get intimidated to talking with with your parent or teachers, so this is very informal, and you can just go ahead and ask. And I'm actually gonna bring in some Uno cards, so that way, if they wanted to play a game while they're talking, you know, I think it would be very fun, and and it's different. So we'll see how that goes. And then we do have adult craft coming up, which is a pine cone gnome, and that is on January twenty second at six P M. We have another chill chat and craft with Ren, and that is a craft geared towards children ten and up. So it's a little bit more of an advanced craft. And lastly, this month, the first time we did break a record in November, all I heard it was blast.
That looks so fun.
And what is a hit, so we are doing a second one, so there were some records that were, we couldn't even do, this time is running short. And that is on Saturday the twenty seventh, and for example, they're gonna try to balance how many CDs on one finger, so I gotta bring in all my old burnt CDs.
Oh, yeah.
The good thing, I still have them, and that is at twelve o'clock. So, you know, even though it's winter, we we still have a lot going on here, so I'm I'm thrilled that we we can offer all this. And any other, any questions about the director's report, or any other announcements?
That's so quickly, you know, to me, because it looked like it didn't have a computer.
It does not.
It does not, to me, and a lot of other people, I think.
Not at. Yeah, not at all, and then, so when you do certain challenges or certain, when you land on certain things, you can come in, receive a bookmark, which I bought scratch and sniff.
And you get a stamp, and you finish, and and the railroads, in the railroads encourage you to visit, if you land on, they have a different color on the railroads.
Yes.
And one of them encourages you to go to the Dartmouth Library, another one is the New Bedford Library, and then you have Fairhaven and.
I saw that. Metta Poison.
Metta Poison.
Yep.
So I think that would be totally, so it would be fun.
It did look good, and it did pull in a computer.
And then hopefully, when.
And I do have those.
And I, and I think, no, no, and I think the best part too is that you get to pick your own books, so if they're not telling you that you need to read this book, they're telling you that you can read.
We don't know. Right. Right. A book about.
Yeah, well, I I think one of them was a book with an animal on the cover.
Yeah.
I mean, you could pick any book you wanted.
Anything, and yesterday, there were just been signed up, they went and the children's room sat there, read a book. You know, and they read a few, and they already got their stamps that day, it was like perfect.
Right.
But like, when you do complete it, you will get a a special prize, and then after that, there would be two grand prizes that you put your name in, so for children, we have Monopoly, uh, Bluey Monopoly. And then adult, I haven't, we're getting a monopoly, I just haven't got it yet, so I think it's exciting.
Absolutely.
It's different, I like it. All right. Any other questions about anything?
I just wanted to say fantastic job on the grants, the the from the Cultural Council, I know that was a lot of work, and with everything that you've got going on, I mean, that was huge.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
I mean, I mean, twenty-three hundred extra dollars to to go toward programs or any different things, I mean, that's a lot.
And I am waiting on one more, so.
But that's, that's a lot, that is a lot of work, and then, you know, getting getting this state aid done, especially the first time, I mean, that was, you know, that was good, and I mean, as things come up, I know it's somewhat overwhelming, and it just, you know, it takes a lot of time, especially to get it done the first time. But it it doesn't go unnoticed, and it was, it's it's really good. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great job. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, the next meeting, I have.
Oh.
February, yes, is everyone good with a Valentine's Day meeting, is everyone good with that? Okay, so we have our next meeting on Wednesday, February fourteenth at twelve thirty, if that works for everyone. Okay. Anyone, nobody has a conflict? Anybody have any any other business? Motion. Oops, is this there? Oh, hold on.
Just making note of the statistics, everything is increasing. Here's someone. That, no, just wanna say once again, what a great job you're all doing, numbers are going up, there's a circulation, people counter of one thousand, five hundred and forty people. Came into this building last month, that's just incredible, so.
No, you're kidding. I'm done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This January tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is one twenty-two. Thank you.